Councillors, the time is now five P M and I would advise, I'll declare the meeting open. I'll ask the gallery to please remain quiet while we start the meeting. The meeting, the time is now five P M and I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members of the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to be captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of this meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate the building, council's emergency must appoint during council meetings is the lower car park. In the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Council acknowledges the One or All people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today. We pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awabikul people to the east and the Darkinjung people to the south and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Sesnok local government area. Please stand for the council prayer, councillor Dunn.
Most gracious God, we pray to the council of the city of Sesnok, its members and officers, direct their work and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of this city so that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
A leave of absence has been granted for councillor Alson, councillor Jackson from the eighteenth of August to the fourteenth of November inclusive. There are no other apologies. Disclosures of interest? No disclosures of interest. There are no merrill minutes. We'll now move on to the rescission motion, R M three twenty twenty-three. Moving that way is councillor Jurd and seconded councillor. Is there a, was there a point of order or?
Before I move the motion, I suspension of standing orders so that I can move the following motion, that council allow the applicant Anthony O'Malley, who applied to speak tonight, but was refused by the general manager, be allowed to speak as this is a very important matter for residents, business owners and employees who reside along or work along Wallonby Road.
Just seeking advice from the director, acting director.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The council has delegated the general manager through the code of meeting practice to be able to refuse or allow public access. In this regard, there is no recourse for the council to be able to overturn that but for a change of the code of meeting practice, which would require the change to happen, go out on exhibition and then be resolved by council at a future meeting.
Can you read out the point in that code of meeting practice where we can't have a speaker?
It is four point six.
Read out what it says, please.
The general manager or their delegate may refuse an application to speak in public access. The general manager or their delegate must give reasons in writing for a decision to refuse an application.
Yes, that's correct. The general manager can refuse, but we as councillors override the general manager. We tell the general manager what.
Councillor Alson, we've sought advice on whether the motion you've requested to be moved is a lawful motion and the answer was, was no, that it's, it's not. So we have a motion of dissent in the ruling that it is unlawful.
Yes, I'm moving a motion of dissent because we've been given no reason by the general manager why this resident has been refused the right to speak. We had a rescission motion recently where people were allowed to speak. I'm sure this gentleman that wants to speak tonight is here to represent all these people that here and those that have been locked out tonight. They're all here for one reason. They're worried about their livelihoods, they're worried about their businesses, they're worried about their access to their properties and their parking. They want to hear what this man's got to say and so do I. And I'm sure this man can influence some other councillors to consider what they are doing and what they are voting on tonight. So we should be overriding the general manager. We as a council run the council, not the general manager. And the code says the general manager says he can refuse. He's given no reason for refusal and I don't, I don't accept that. And as a council, we should not accept it from the general manager. He hasn't even said a word about it tonight, why he has refused and he probably won't tell us why he's refused the access to it. And maybe he might be prepared after, after the debate to tell us why. But I don't believe we are being fair to these residents that's taken their time to come tonight, closed their businesses down early to get here because the meeting's early to be here and we can't listen to one resident for three minutes. What is wrong with this council?
In addressing the, the motion of dissent, I don't believe the general manager was actually even asked by anyone why, if you provided reasons or why he made those reasons. But I understand that the general manager will have followed the, the code of meeting practice and if he refused a request to speak, I'm sure he did provide reasons on that. I made my decision because we saw, no, I, councillor. Councillor Alson, you don't have that. Councillor Alson, I, we're talking about your motion of dissent at the moment and I made my ruling on that we can't deal with a motion of suspension of standing orders because it's not allowed for under the code of meeting practice to do what you're asking to do. So, so I've made, I've made my ruling and we'll now go to a vote on the matter of the motion of dissent. So those are in favour of the motion of dissent from councillor Alson. Councillors Painter, Wotton, Alson and Jurd, those against. Councillor Moore, you've got to vote one way or the other. So can we record councillor Moore's in, councillor Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval, I'll declare the motion lost. We'll now move to dealing with the item. I think, did I say councillor, was it councillor, you're moving it or councillor Jurd?
I've just got two questions, one of yourself, mayor. Could you please explain to those that are in attendance here tonight why you called an extraordinary meeting for this rescission motion when previously stating it costs too much to have an extraordinary meeting? And why, if you call an extraordinary meeting, why you hold it at five o'clock at non, at normal six thirty meeting times so businesses can get close and get to this, to this meeting?
Councillor Alson, my understanding is there's been many meetings that have been extraordinary meetings held around this time of five P M because it usually comes at a time when we have briefings or those things scheduled. So this has been a practice in the past where they have been at this time. And the reason I called the, the thing because the rescission motion is delaying getting people the answers they want. They want to know what is going to happen on Wallonby Road. They want to know the answers about this and until the tender is issued and the, the plans are able to be looked at, they won't get the answers. So by delaying this further tonight, we're delaying giving answers to all these people that want answers. So that's why I called the meeting.
Yeah, I've got one more question for councillor Hawkins, if I may, before I move the motion. Miss councillor Hawkins, you have been telling business owners that.
Councillor Alson, can I ask that we move the motion?
I'll move the motion after I ask the question that way.
Like, there's no business before us, so you're not asking questions about.
Okay, well, I'll move the motion then.
Is the motion seconded councillor Wotton?
The question I have councillor Hawkins, you've been telling business owners that they will not lose parking spaces because if the road is, 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 is too wide and there's, and there's not enough room for parking, the council will make the footpath smaller to allow parking. Who has told you that this is what we are going to do and which staff member was that, please?
Councillor Hawkins.
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor Alson, I'm not sure which version of Chinese whispers you're trying to report on here, but, but that is, it's almost correct. What I've specifically said and quite clearly is that nothing has been decided yet and that there are a lot of options and that until we explore every option, nowhere have I ever seen anything that says remove parking. This is what people have imagined, that it has to be no parking, that it has to be simply four lanes. I have given dozens of examples of where bike lanes could be changed into a travelling lane where footpaths can be moved and, and I'm told that is, is quite an obvious option. Everything is on the table. That's why we need to get these, the, the engineers to do these studies so that we can show people what we've got. Because I'm pretty sure what's in your head is a long way different from what's in my head. It is on most things. And when you've been telling people for the last fourteen years that it needs to be four lanes of travel, you're the one telling people this needs to happen. The sooner, it can't come soon enough, I think was your exact words, and now here you are delaying it. I've been telling people and I'm still telling people that nothing's been decided. Until we get the actual facts and figures and engineers' design for what is there and what can be there, why are we jumping at shadows and jumping to these disastrous conclusions? I think, I think it's, it's terrible that people are thinking this is what's potentially going to happen. And I'm, I'm happy to talk to anyone about any part of anywhere.
Yeah, so I, I think we're, we're not here to debate people's answers. So speaking councillor Alson in favour of the resident.
Look, mayor, I'll, I'll be quite blunt about this. To say nothing's been decided, yourself, councillor Hawkins and councillor Moore were all on the front page of the advertisers' spruik and we've got four lanes coming down Wallonby Road. So that's been decided. This government, if information come out, say it's for four lanes down Wallonby Road. That's not an argument here tonight, I'm not going to argue about that. What I'm arguing, going to talk about tonight is what is the job of a councillor? And the job of a councillor is to listen to these people sitting over here tonight, the ones that talk, the ones that talk to us out on the street. These people want to know what our plans are. We are getting misinformation out there because different people are telling different people different things. So what we need, can we just keep councillor Hawkins quiet, please?
I think there was more noise out of the gallery. I didn't hear councillor Alson.
The gallery doesn't worry me, mayor.
Because of the gallery, but.
The gallery doesn't worry me, it's, it's this little snickering snipe of a mask coming from up here.
Continue on councillor Alson, you have the floor.
So the, so we're here, we're here to represent the residents and if the residents want more information before we spend one point seven million dollars on, on what we're going to do on Wallonby Road, well, let's listen to them. Maybe I did say fourteen years ago, let's get four lanes. Maybe I said it last week, let's get four lanes. But there's enough people here telling me we don't want it. My job is their voice. My voice is to vote for them. These people do not want one-on-one meetings. They're getting told one thing by one person and something else by someone else. We want public meetings. We want meetings at Bellbird Workers' Club, East Sesnok Goon Club, down at, down at Ali's Club. Have some public meetings so the same information goes out to everybody all the time. Live stream it so people can watch it as well, so that everybody gets the same information. There's so much misinformation going out there at the moment. Why is a consultation stopping at the West Avenue? Why shouldn't the consultation come all the way down to Allendale Road where, where we want to put four lanes? Why are we stopping at, at West Avenue? These other businesses down here are going to be affected big time, just as much if not worse. We are talking about removing the roundabout at Audi. Has anyone spoke to K F C about that? Has anyone spoke to Taco Bell? Has anyone spoken, spoke to the seven eleven? Or has anyone spoke to I G A where all their trucks go up and do a U-turn and go out of town? Where are those trucks going to go? Back through our main street? We haven't done any, any consultation with anybody, yet we're going to spend one point seven million dollars to see how we squeeze in four lanes. That's not what we should be doing. Even at Percy Street, on the planes I've seen, there's an over right turn into Percy Street. Now, how do you get to the Aussie Hotel, to the motel? Please, tell these people, tell the business owners. And at the end of the day, at the end of the day, it's thirty-three million, we're guessing, and we know how our guesses go here at this council. And what will it end up? We haven't got enough funds to do it. We haven't got enough income coming from the developer to do it. So then when we do finish this section, when we do finish this section, we go down to do the next section and we're out there chasing funding. Now Clayton Bar was in a meeting here, I didn't attend, but he told everybody, don't come to me. Don't come to me because we've got no money. The flyer coming out today from Clayton Bar telling them a hundred and seventy-nine million dollars in debt, ah, no, sorry, a hundred and eighty-seven billion dollars in debt and there's no money. So there's no money to do the next section, but we're going to start, we're going to push ahead, push ahead and push ahead and get all these plans and spend one point seven million and these people out here don't even know if they're going to have a job next week. Please stop this ludicrous money spending, money and plan and talk to people and listen to what their, their concerns are before we go out and spend one point seven. If you don't know how, what road, why the road is, I've got a tape measure at home that can measure it for you. Thank you.
Councillor Jurd. Councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've seen the red light on, but I just was waiting a minute. I've got a couple of questions before I speak. So Bellbird North would, would have a planning agreement, yeah?
The director.
Through you, Mr Mayor, yes, there are a number of approved development applications for Bellbird subdivisions.
Yeah, okay. And with a planning agreement, you can change things on that agreement. As I remember, we've done this in a term, within my term with Huntley's planning agreement as it's come back a few times and we've changed things. Is that right?
Through you, Mr Mayor, there's a slight difference. Huntley is a, is a planning agreement, whereas these are actually development approvals. But the applicant can apply to have a condition of their consent modified.
So could we, could we change anything on that? Like, can council go back to the developer and change anything?
No, it's up to the applicant to apply for a modification if they wish.
Why is it so different to Huntley?
Because as I explained before, the Huntley agreement is a planning agreement. It is slightly different. I haven't got the exact details in front of me here, but that was an agreement where there's two parties to that agreement. A development approval is an approval issued by the council and confirmed by the Environment Court and those conditions are set by that body. So it's not, not so much an agreement, it's a, this is the conditions that you must comply with to exercise this consent.
Okay.
And just to note for relevance that the Huntley development is a state significant development that's approved by the state planning authority, not by council.
Well, the reason I was referencing it is because it's the first time we've had a planning agreement come back in my term. So that's why I referenced it to make sure that you knew why I was asking that question. Bellbird North is the reason for the four lanes, is it not? The development agreement is if they build up to four thousand five, four thousand, five thousand lots, they must do four lanes. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr Mayor, it's once they reach four hundred and sixty-five lots, then there must be four laning between Abbotsford and West Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Is it also correct that the four lanes will not fit in all locations of the two point nine? This is a conversation I had with our director, Paul, who, who said to me on Friday that he knows already that four lanes will not fit in all locations of the two point nine.
I asked the direct, acting director to, to clarify around that, but.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I'll have to take that on notice. I'll have to check with the director at the time as he had the conversation. So I'm not sure what information he's referencing there in that comment.
Thank you. At this stage, we don't have to do the four lanes unless the developer wants to sell up to the four thousand six hundred, couple of, whatever you said, director. And we're only at three thousand two hundred at the moment, is that right?
Through you, Mr Mayor, there was a memo that went out to all councillors just recently that had that information and I think from memory they were up to about two twenty or something like that, although they were expecting to reach the four hundred. I need to stress four hundred, not four thousand, four hundred lots sometime next financial year.
Okay, right, yeah, thank you. The most we have to do, this is, this is again from the conversation I had with Paul, was that the most we had to do was intersection upgrades and make it viable to put four lanes in by twenty forty-one.
I don't know which, just one of the director, just want to take that, I.
I'll just have to take that notice, question on notice, Mr Mayor.
Right, yeah, thank you. Yeah, has council looked for the plans yet about the water mains? After last council meeting, I received a phone call from a local plumber who said he was contracted by council and along with Hunter Water to remove all the water mains under Wallonby Road and reconnect all properties. I mentioned this to our director on Friday when we had our first one-on-one conversation.
Through you, Mr Mayor. We've been in consultation with Hunter Water and no water mains have been upgraded on Wallonby Road at this stage.
Okay, I'm just going to mention the, the contractor that done that work is actually here tonight. Okay, so there has been confusion on when this road will start and finish. Is this road needing to be completed by twenty-six, twenty twenty-six to make sure we don't lose the grant?
Through you, Mr Mayor. The grant we've agreed to has an expiry date of end of the final, financial year twenty twenty-six.
Thank you. When we applied for the grant, is, is the grant for four lanes?
Director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. The grant was specifically related to the D A consent conditions for the upgrades required on Wallonby Road.
Okay, so then why the last council meeting, did a few people here try to pretend that this report is to work out if we can be four lanes or not, when the grant is for four lanes?
Yeah, director, acting director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. So in terms of an investigation, we have to prepare ourselves for essentially that worst case scenario based on the corridor we have. And that would be in this situation, four lanes with parking. So to investigate that to its extent, we have to communicate that to design consultants. So that's why it's communicated that way.
Okay, it just doesn't explain why I've been told, like, there was a few that said in here that, oh, there's no, no, we ain't even talking about four lanes. The one the grant we applied for was for four lanes. Another point from my conversation with the director, when I asked what the one point seven million dollars would get us and why is it, why we calling for an extra meeting? He said, we have to get this sorted to be able to stay on time as we need to do potholing on Wallonby Road to know what is under the road, what sort of base we are looking at, et cetera. Now, around the seventh of August, I, I seen council potholing on Wallonby Road already as I needed to go to Bellbird Buttry and got caught in the traffic stop and go. I sat there and watched them do it and wasn't sure what they were doing until after I spoke to our director and went home and thought about it prior to even this report coming to council the first time. I mean, why do we need to spend one point seven million dollars on this report when council has already done the potholing they should have and they have, they should have the plans for the water mains and phone lines? So what really is one point seven million actually going to get us?
Before I, I refer on to the, the director, councillor Jurd, I'm not sure how many more questions that you, you have listed, but I will remind you that under clause nine point one seven of the code of meeting practice, that council employees are entitled to be given reasonable notice of these questions. And if you actually want detailed answers to these, I would encourage you to submit them in writing to them before the meeting to get your answers.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor.
So referring to the. Councillor Alson.
I submitted questions for this meeting tonight and haven't got answers yet. So that's why sometimes we have to answer them here, ask them here.
It's not a point of order, the acting director.
Through you, Mr Mayor. So we're going to get an investigation into the existing conditions on Wallonby Road and look at the design options for what might be able to better increase the capacity for traffic movements on Wallonby Road. And I want to confirm that we'll consider all options and consult as we have communicated through the council briefing that was earlier this year that details how we're going to consult with the community through that, that everybody's had the chance to provide feedback on.
Count, yeah, yeah, councillor Hill.
In councillor Jurd's just previous question, I think I might have got it mixed up. You're talking about the director mentioning that we are looking to do potholing as a part of this study and then you mentioned you saw them potholing. I think maybe I might have a different idea, sorry, of what potholing for me thinks. I think that's, I think of people just like filling in potholes. But in this case, that the, what the director was talking about, would a potholing be more like a core drill so they can see more like what it is? So is, are you saying that you saw them doing the core drilling out there or the potholing, filling in with asphalt?
Okay.
Councillor Jurd.
All right, thank you, Mr Mayor. So I've spoken to so many people about this road. Tonight I'll be standing for those residents, as I've stated multiple times. Show me in black and white why we have to this, do this road, why we can't change it and why are we doing it? Have you not seen how many houses have gone up for sale on Wallonby Road since this has been made public? Do you realise that it's hard enough to sell houses along this road as it is, let alone once it's, it's four lanes? Have you thought about how much this would change the value of your house? I mean, Mr Mayor, have you thought about your corner property on the, on Wallonby Road? Have you thought about the driveways and how many people will have to go around the block to be able to turn into theirs? Because who wants to sit on four lanes trying to turn right? I know I wouldn't. The same paperwork from the briefing even says there will be right turn bans on some streets with hard barriers to stop it. Have you thought about the back streets that can't handle the traffic on them as it is now? Or how much more of a budget strain it will have to try and fix these streets? Or will they turn into pothole messes that then we're expected to tell the residents that there's no money in the budget to fix your road? I have. Have you thought about all the extra cars parking in the side streets, especially around the businesses or the school? Think you can't get a park out the front of your house now? Just wait. Have you thought about the businesses at all? Will they survive the building of this road? I suppose your family business, councillor Hawkins, should be fine as there is traffic light for them to still turn into James and Ivan Street, or will it? Have you thought about the post office at West Sesnok? That is, that is where all the residents from West Sesnok Bellbird collect their parcels from. I'd hate to live in the side streets near that, that business. You'll never get a park out the front of your house. Have you not listened to the thousands of residents who do not want this road? I know I've thought about this, my position on this is very clear. When this first come to council last year, I asked for information from the first briefing when council wanted to apply for this grant. I was told in that briefing that I could, could get the information like I was asking for, yet the next day told I'm not allowed it. I've asked for more information and my emails don't get returned. This will be the biggest mistake council has ever done, even worse than the dot and the jail entrance. And I'm horrified that my name is going to be connected to this forever, even though I will never vote in favour of this fiasco.
Councillor Moore's.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This week I've met with the business people of Wallonby Road and also residents of Wallonby Road. Everybody's on a different page. No one seems to have the knowledge of what's going on in the town and what's going on on Wallonby Road. Also, Mr Mayor, you told us at the council that we're just getting an engineer's survey done. If this is the case, why is it on the New South Wales Government website that it reads upgrade of Wallonby Road includes the intersections, the upgrades, that increasing to four lanes between Aberford Street and West Avenue? So this has already been planned. So the upgrade of Wallonby Road has already been decided. So as a number of dwellings supported by the project, it says it's three thousand three hundred and seventy-five. I feel we're not being told the full truth or the residents are not getting, be told the full truth. I feel. I feel that we are, as a council, we should have a public meeting with the residents, whether it be at the Performing Arts Centre or a club or somewhere that is big enough to have a, a big enough public gathering at town and put everything on the table. I am here for the residents who voted me in this town. So, and now if, if I really don't know what's going on myself and I'm being told that after we've had an engineer's report, we then decide whether we're going to have two lanes or four lanes, then I read on the New South Wales Planning of Government, New South Wales, that there's no two lanes, it's four lanes. I think what we can do from here, I think we should just stop this. I can't vote. I think what we can do from here, I think we should just stop this. I can't vote for it tonight, and I think we should. I feel we should just go away and we should come back and we should have a public forum with the people of the town and let's listen to what they have to say. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Watten.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Um, I couldn't agree more with councillor Moors on that topic. We do need a forum to get everything on the same page because there is a lot of, uh, miscommunication there. I've got one question, uh, essentially because councillor Judd asked a lot of questions that I was gonna ask, that share notes there. But basically it comes down to the memo that was shared on the seventeenth of August where it mentions that due to, uh, requirements imposed by the Land and Environment Court in two thousand nineteen, that there does need to be four-lane roads, uh, in sections. So, the question I have to ask is, um, I, I'd say it's to the director of planning and environment is, uh, there was mentioned that he was gonna follow up and challenge those actual, um, consents imposed by council and the need to have them. I just wanted to find out what's happened with that so far, if there's anything that's happened with it.
Director.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, there was, look, there was just a, a clear, um, I suppose you'd call a grammatical error in the conditions, in that one of the conditions said four lanes from Abbotsford to, um, Mount View, and the next condition said four lanes from Abbotsford to Weston. But of course, that second one's already included in the first one, so it should have said Abbotsford to Weston and then Weston to Mount View. So it's just clearly an error. We've been in contact with, um, the applicants. They're gonna put in a modification to the court to get that corrected.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, just to clarify, like, there, there is four lanes regardless in sections. And those roads that you just mentioned, Abbottson, Abbottson Road to Mount View Road and then West Avenue to Mount View Road. Um, and then, yeah, a lot of hinges on the, the development of those, those four lanes happening regardless. Um, goes back to the point that we do need a town hall meeting. We need to have lots of public, public forum and have everything spoken about on the same page. Um, I'll leave it there. Thank you. Yep.
Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I agree with a lot of things that have been said tonight and, and a lot of the issues that councillor Moors raised are very valid points. Um, in saying that, I've, I've been a councillor for six and a half, nearly seven years now, and up until the last few months, every person that's spoken to me about Wallonby Road has spoken about the issues regarding traffic and what are we doing to ease the congestion of traffic on Wallonby Road. Now, I have spent seven years campaigning for the grants that we've received for this. And these grants actually came under the last, the previous, um, coalition government for this. So, i- it means quite a lot to me to see these grants come in to Cesnock Council and I'd hate to see that wasted. Now, given that, some of the main points to take away from here are, in two thousand and nine, this council agreed on conditions of consent. And the trigger for conditions of consent in regard to that were four hundred and fifty lots. Now, we've been told that in the next, um, twelve months, we're going to reach those four hundred and fifty lots. Secondary to that, we have been made aware now that the Land and Environment Court have in fact ruled that it has to be done. And we don't have a decision around the fact that it's going to be four lanes. Now, that information came to every councillor at a different stage. None of us were on the same page. Up until even today, we've all had different information and that's been extremely difficult to take. Because we, we, we can't speak to the residents knowing exactly what's going on up until today. Because none of us knew precisely what was going on and it was drip-fed through the state government, through council. And, you know, up until today, we, we've all been on different pages on what we thought was the go. Now, given that, we, we find ourselves at a point now where the state government have ruled that it needs to be four lanes. Um, that, that in itself does concern us because it doesn't seem as though that could possibly fit the entire length and that, that is a problem. The residents have overwhelmingly stated that their concerns are around parking and, and specifically around the small business and how that's going to affect small business. But we, we arise, we arrive at this position where we can't go forward. And we put out a tender to communicate to the residents. And my, my understanding is when we actually did that tender and that tender was awarded, the tender was actually awarded to gather the information of who the stakeholders were. And I don't know whether we've overstepped our bounds as, as the, the tender, the communication tenderer, um, actually started saying what they thought was going to happen when they shouldn't have been. It was more about a information gathering session. But we find ourselves now where the, the residents don't know and they are concerned and they're scared about losing their parks. But we as a council can't go any further forward until we know exactly what we can and can't do. And this is the frustration of it. Now, as a single councillor, I cannot promise anything because there are thirteen people in this room. But if I take the parameters of the fact that we as a council in two thousand and nine accepted four and, four hundred and fifty lots as the trigger point for four lanes. And then the Land and Environment Court have then come on top of that and said, it's going to happen. It is now incumbent upon us to actually work out what we can and can't do and take note of what the residents are saying with regard to the parking. Now, I don't wanna go to the residents and have a meeting with them and promise things that I do not know I can deliver. And for me, this tender allows us to know exactly what we can and can't do. So when we actually have the meetings with the residents, we know what we can and can't do. And then we can look at making sure that every piece of parking that we possibly can can actually be maintained. So for me, it's not about, this, this tender is not about whether we have four lanes or not. This tender is about us working out exactly what we can and can't do. So we can ensure that the state government just don't take it over and flog down four lanes into Wallonby Road without any regard for any of the residents and the businesses. Now, my personal preference is that we, we, we do need four lanes, but it's at the extent of small business right now. But in saying that, we still don't know whether mixed cycle ways can go onto footpaths. We don't know whether, what parts of the road can fit four lanes and still have two lanes of parking. And we don't know, um, what parts we can have, um, clearways. It's, it's not known until we have this tender and do the work.
Thank you. Councillor Painter.
Yeah, I think my, my biggest problem with this, um, situation is we go out to consultation to, to the community and we, we talk to them about, um, the process. And when we go to consultation, we give the impression that the community has a say. When all the evidence that I'm pointing to with the tenders and the, um, Land and Environment Court and different things, it's all pointed to four lanes. So, the way that we communicate to the, to the young public with consultation in my mind says, you have a say. What, and what I'm hearing is really they don't. The, the decision's kind of already been made. Now, everybody agrees, I've talked to a lot of people about this on both sides of, um, you know, of, of the court and the public. Everybody agrees that Wallonby Road needs to work, it needs some upgrading and that, um, development's gonna, gonna happen. Um, I'm part of that. Like, I moved up to this area about thirty years ago. Since then, my children have stayed in the area and built houses. Um, my sisters have moved up to the area within the last five years. And so my, my family's moved up into this area to make Cecil their home. And so we need more homes and we need more access, um, to, so basically I'm pro-development. But above that, I'm also pro-community and pro-the residents. Um, this council is not our council, it's their council. Uh, we, we represent them. And, um, and so, I, you know, I've been thinking about it for two weeks and I've spoken to a lot of people about it for two weeks. And I'm still not a hundred percent decided on how I'm gonna vote tonight, um, because we know we need the, 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 the study. But if that's another step down the road to getting four lanes, I'm not in favour of that. I'm in favour of something different and I'm not sure whether we can even, you know, talk about it. But, um, I think on Wallonby Road, the bypassing road is, is twenty years away, if, if we're lucky, all right? So we need a solution in the, in the short to medium term. Um, so the only solution I can see which will address almost all concerns is if we have merging lanes, so people who can turn left and right and do like a three-lane option where the, the through traffic can keep going and you have off-roads into, into, um, to the side streets. That's the only compromise I can see, but whether we're willing to or whether the grant allows that, or whether we lose the grant. Uh, I'm, I'm an expert on those, those, um, things. Uh, we're told at the last council meeting that what you have to do is upgrade the intersections. And then we're here and we, we need to go to four lanes. And so even within this chamber, the information changes. And so it makes it very difficult to make a decision, um, and, and a formal decision on, um, how to move forward. Um, so, that's all I wanted to say. One question I do have to the director of Works and Instruction or the director of Planning. The one point seven million dollars for the, for the study, does that come out of council's money or is that, as I say, government money? And the secondary question to that is, if the public decides and we vote not to go ahead with a four-lane upgrade, if we use, if it's from the state money, do we need to pay that back? Or how, how does that go if we decide, if the public actually has, has a say in it, do we have to pay that money back?
The Acting Director.
Uh, thanks, uh, councillor Painter. The, uh, money for this tender is budgeted and paid for out of the existing grant. So it's not council funds. Um, the, if, um, if there comes to a point at which council, uh, does not go ahead with the project as outlined in the grant, there is a, there's a risk, usually quite a small one, that the, that the state can ask for the funds back. But generally they accept that if the design has failed, they'll just fund that part and we give the rest of it back.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, uh, just through you, Mr. Mayor, just to, just to fully answer that question for you, councillor Painter. You also run the risk that since two thousand and nine, you've been collecting developer contributions for the upgrade of this road. And if this, um, project did not go forward, you would most likely have to refund those contributions.
Okay, um, before I hand to councillor Alson for the, the writer reply, um, just a, a couple of things I'd, I'd like to say to the, to the councillors, um, that are unsure of, of what they're, they're voting on tonight. Uh, into the residents, uh, that are concerned about this project. Uh, I, I understand that the residents are wanting to see more information. I understand that they wanna know what this is gonna look at, look like and how this is gonna affect them. Uh, we are all, I think in, in this room, uh, completely understanding of that. I, we're in a position where we don't have those plans to, to give you at the moment. And for us to have a town hall meeting, we would be standing out with a blank screen and saying exactly what I've said on, on my, uh, on a, um, Facebook Live Q and A the other day. What councillor Dunn has, has said here today, uh, that what other councillors said, uh, a fortnight ago. That we need this tender to be approved to give you the information you're after. There are plenty of things in, in this that the consultation is out there to ask people about. We, we've asked residents early on in this, um, project about anything that they're worried about. And, and a lot of people have said, we're worried that we're gonna lose parking and we're not gonna be able to park out the front of our house or have customers park out the front of our business. That's been the biggest thing that people have said. Uh, they've said, uh, that they're, they're worried about traffic flows and bottlenecks and whether it's just gonna end at West Avenue or whether it will go further down. And so what we have asked for this tender to, to do is to actually look at the whole stretch of the road, uh, through to, uh, Allendale, uh, Road and, and Vincent Street, uh, right back to Abbotsford Street and, and give us, uh, an idea of what can happen. And we've said that we wanna prioritise maintaining permanent parking along that strip. So we understand that residents are concerned about perma- having parking there. And our priority is to maintain permanent parking across that strip. So, we don't know what can happen, but as councillor Hawkins has, has said before and it was referred to tonight, um, about what could possibly happen on that road. There's, there's some councillors that have the view that by four lanes of traffic means no parking. But there's, if anyone goes and looks at those stretches of road and the road corridors, the traffic lanes that are there are quite wide as they are. There's two cycle lanes. Councillor Alson on a point of order.
Yeah, you say the, the lanes are quite wide. How wide are they? And it's, what is the legal width of a road?
It's not a point of order. Councillor Alson, it's not a point of- Councillor Alson, I'm speaking about why we need to do the, the studies on this. And there, there is options there that people, I think will have their concerns addressed when we have the plans done. There's also plenty of residents, uh, from along there that struggle every day to access Wallonby Road that need safe access to get on there and cross onto Wallonby Road. And intersection upgrades will improve that, safe access. There's plenty of people that live in Belbird and West Cesnock that want safe pedestrian and cycleway access into the Cesnock CBD. And this project offers that. There are many benefits of this and we need to consider this as a whole. But what I'm asking councillors to do tonight is approve the tender so we can get the information we need to be able to show these residents what it is. Because at the moment, any meetings that are being held off, any town hall meetings that you want to have have no information to be provided. We cannot ease any residents' concerns until we get this tender information done. So, I'm asking all councillors to consider that and consider the fact that we cannot address any residents' concerns unless this, uh, unless this tender is approved. We really need support it tonight. Thank you. Councillor Alson.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Um, I don't know what the actual rules are on road width, but I'm sure I look at that road and I don't think they're wide lanes. But anyway, that's your opinion and my opinion's different to yours a lot, many effects. The facts we do know, and this is where a lot of misinformation is getting out there. The fact we do know, Wallonby Road from Abbotsford Street to West Avenue is going to be four lanes. No denying it. You can't walk out of this room and tell people it's not gonna be four lanes because we've all decided tonight it's four lanes. We know that. What other facts do we know? Not much. So, if we don't know if it'll fit, why do we need to spend one point seven million dollars to find out where services are? To find out where everything else is, if we don't know if it'll fit? Wouldn't you go out there and measure it first and say, this isn't wide enough for four lanes and to have parking? So these people out here know straight away. Go and measure it. I've got a tape measure at home, you can borrow. You don't have to buy one. It's not, it's not rocket science. We don't need to spend one point seven million dollars to go and measure the road in a number of places along there. We have staff here that are capable, I'm sure, of measuring, measuring distances across the width of a road and just get a couple of stop, go sign people to help us. We can do that and then come back to council and say, if we put in four lanes and two lanes of parking and cycleways, we haven't got enough room. It's not rocket science. Do that first before we spend one point seven million dollars and then say, shit, we spent two million dollars all up now, we're gonna have to keep moving forward. We're gonna have to keep moving forward. And we don't care what the residents think. We're not going to go back to the residents and say, it's too late now, we spent two million dollars and we got, we gotta, otherwise we're gonna give all this money back. The grants we, the, the funding we get from what, uh, Belbird Development, I'm sure we can come to a solution with how much money we collected. But it's not just for Wallonby Road what we're collecting, it's for a number of roads. The roads are in a list here of what we get. There's a whole list of them and Wallonby Road's not the only one on there. So that not all the money comes from there, goes to Wallonby Road. There is a lot of other roads that we're supposed to be doing. A lot of other intersections we're supposed to be doing. We're not going to get enough to cover the cost of these four lanes. And we're not gonna get the money to finish it from West Avenue to Allendale Road because Clayton Bar's already told you, told everyone. There is no money, don't ask me. So why push forward with one, spending one point seven million dollars on a project that we haven't got enough money to build anyway and we can destroy people's businesses and livelihoods? And we can make the road actually unsafe when people trying to get into, in and out of their properties. And we can make the road actually unsafe when people are trying to get in and out of their properties. I know, I know there's a lot of people out there been looking at what I've done over the last 23 years as a councillor to see what they can bag me out for. Go for your life. I don't care what you, what you think of me or what you, what you find out about me. But at this point in time, when the residents come and tell me they don't want something, my opinion doesn't matter. What I voted on 10 years ago doesn't matter. I have to listen to them because we, we all here are their voice. We're not our voice, we're their voice and that's what we should be doing.
No further debate. We'll now put the rescission motion, so those are voting in favour of the rescission motion. Councillors Moors, Painter, Watten, Olson and Judd, those against. Councillors Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval, I'll declare it lost. I'll now close the meeting.